I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of December 19th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo is absent. Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Potem Aguilar Hernandez is absent. Mayor Patino?
Here.
First item of the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak at this time? And we have two requests?
Yes.
Okay. And so, Matt Chirkop and Jeremy Mace?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm requesting five minutes tonight, if that's okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Matthew Chirkop, and I'm president of the Santa Maria Firefighters Association. The Firefighters Association represents your hardworking, rank-and-file firefighters, who day in and day out put their lives on the line to protect the lives and property of the residents of Santa Maria. I am here tonight because the city executive staff are not treating your firefighters fairly, and it is my job to speak up when this happens. As you know, we are in negotiations with staff over a successor contract. The city staff currently have a contract offer that is far worse than each of the last three contracts in 2015, 2017, and 2021. As you know, the city and the firefighters have engaged in negotiations, and after only two meetings, the city has chosen to give the firefighters a last, best, and final proposal. A proposal that continues to keep the firefighters and their families well behind the local market and does not value the hard work that we do on a daily basis. It also does not keep up with inflation. This proposal was unanimously rejected by every single voting member. Furthermore, our families are having to normalize the feeling of having an absent parent as a result of being habitually understaffed and overworked. Each of our 53 firefighters are expected to pick up an additional 36 24-hour shifts per year to fill the staffing vacancies. That's an extra 864 hours of work per year that we are forced to work in addition to the regular 2,912 hours we work every year. It is simply not safe to force your firefighters to work over 3,700 hours per year. The demand on your firefighters and their families is wearing them out and pushing them away to other agencies with fair compensation and less workload. A balanced work and home life is almost impossible. Just ask the children behind me. Recruitment is a constant revolving door. The hiring pool is lacking quality, and the staggering cost to train and retrain firefighters is alarming. We are simply throwing away good money by training these new firefighters, only to see them gain the experience and tenure and then leave for another higher-paid agency. You may recognize some familiar faces behind me. What you may also recognize is the concern on their faces. The concern that the city does not value its firefighters and their families. We have heard time and time again how the city values their employees, but when it comes time to pay the firefighter's market value, city staff have fallen short. At our two meetings, the city representative presented patently false information, information that can be easily validated. Local market data shows your firefighters are 14% behind in pay today. But the city's response doesn't acknowledge that, and when provided with the facts, the city proposed to eliminate the local market comparisons. How can the largest and fastest-growing city in Santa Barbara County provide their firefighters near the lowest compensation? Does that not concern you? It should concern the voters who overwhelmingly approved Measure U twice. Measure U revenue is up over 40% in four years, now bringing in $28 million a year. We see the city spending huge chunks of this money on one-time purchases and items we don't need. What we don't see the city spending this money on is a fair and market-based salary and benefits package for its firefighters. When compared to our equivalent counterparts in the police department, a fire captain makes 21.9% below a police sergeant. The idea that there's no money is a farce, as our colleagues in the police department earn market value. Our hope is that one day, perhaps after the ongoing significant turnover of staff in City Hall and citywide, the city will choose a different approach. One that values firefighting and emergency medical services. One that values all of their employees. An approach that recognizes that building up the workforce will result in a huge return on investment, an investment that translates into better service delivery and quality of life. A workforce that feels appreciated, respected, and dedicated to serving this community, rather than constantly chasing a job with better pay. The time is now. You have the opportunity to change course today. You have the opportunity to change the direction of this city forever. It is up to you to be leaders. It is up to you to do what is right and do what the community elected you to do. We are here asking for a fair, market-based contract. We are not asking to be the highest paid. We are here asking not to be the lowest paid. We are here today asking you to reconsider and offer a contract to put your firefighters at the mean, median of market. That's right. We are simply asking for a contract that gives us average pay compared to the local market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chirkop. Jeremy Mace? Jeremy?
Madam Mayor, I was only able to get a comment, but Matt's sitting there for five minutes.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Okay, the council will now recess to a closed session, and we'll reconvene to the regular meeting portion of the agenda at 5:30. Before I call this meeting to order, I'd like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Ms. Villagrana. And Ms. Villagrana, would you mind raising your hand, waving? Okay, so if you need a listening device, for interpretation service, you can ask her. Antes de llamara la junta, ahora me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. La interpreta de esta tarde es la señora Villagrana. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of December 19th, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo is absent. Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Potem Aguilar Hernandez is absent. Mayor Patino?
Here.
City Attorney Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. With respect to the three items under 3A, B, and C, instructions were provided by the council to the negotiators. No further report is necessary.
Thank you. Our first item of the agenda this evening is a presentation of the businesses of the month, and Councilmember Soto will be presenting the certificates along with the chamber CEO Glenn Morris. Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be with you again this evening. We are here, as we have been each month, to recognize a number, a couple of local businesses, one in the category of healthcare and one in the category of longstanding business, although I think both of these would qualify in that category tonight. I'd like to start with our healthcare provider recognition, and as I do so, I'd like to invite Sofia Sosa, Deputy CEO, and Jose Guzman, Director of Outreach for Community Health Centers of the Central Coast, to join me up front. Formed in 1978, this business has grown from a single clinic to an organization now recognized as the 10th-largest community health center in California. From that initial clinic, CHC today operates 28 licensed health centers, seven mobile and dental vans, and employs nearly 900 individuals in northern Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo counties. CHC provides primary care and specialty services to underserved and uninsured patients in our community, with special emphasis on agriculture, homeless, school-based, and public housing populations, in addition to low-income seniors. Of note, during the pandemic, CHC providers administered 76,000 COVID-19 tests, 57,000 vaccines, and distributed more than 6,000 at-home testing kits. They also created their own viral care kits and distributed more than 18,000 of them to their patient population and local agricultural workers. In addition to the clinics being operated in Santa Maria and the fact that their corporate headquarters is here, CHC is currently working to build a new state-of-the-art supercenter, which will offer primary care, specialty care, optometry, pharmacy, lab draws, chiropractic, health education, behavioral health, and many other services under a single roof. It's also worth reminding our community that it was CHC's relationship with AT Still University as one of their clinical training sites that initially attracted the university to consider Santa Maria and ultimately to build their California campus here in our community. We'd like to salute the leadership and staff of CHC for their critical role in caring for our community.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members, and other staff and community members here. Thank you on behalf of CHC for this award. For those of you that do not know a lot about us or any information about us, we've been around for 45 years. So, we've been providing healthcare services in San Luis Obispo primarily, and then we moved over to Santa Barbara County, northern Santa Barbara County, about 40 years ago. So, we're happy to be here, and thank you for acknowledging us today. And please let us know in the future if there are any healthcare needs. And these folks right behind me, actually, I may get up here to speak and get to navigate the system for everyone here as my role as Deputy CEO, but these folks are the ones who do all the work and all the outreach. So, I'm going to let Jose tell you a little bit about what we're doing out there for the community here in Santa Maria.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, honored and distinguished guests, residents of the beautiful city of Santa Maria, my name is Jose Guzman. I have the honor to represent Community Health Centers of the Central Coast at various community events, northern Santa Barbara County. I often have the opportunity to work with many of you. I know that many of you not only represent the city residents here on the city government, but also a lot of community events, whether it's at the Veterans Standout, where I get to see Mayor Patino, Councilmember Escobedo at Santa Maria Open Streets, worked previously also with Council Member Gloria Soto and many others throughout my years of service here in the city of Santa Maria, working with this fabulous organization that serves over 110,000 patients within the clinic sites, within the several clinics that we have, but also serving the school districts, providing vaccines for children, offering health services for farm workers throughout the community, participating with many organizations, churches, and disseminating information, disseminating food to members of our community, and always looking to see how we can become of greater service to the residents of this wonderful city that continuously grows. And as we grow, we encounter other obstacles. So, CHC is proud to be a member of this community, a pillar of this community, and it's all to the great and wonderful people that belong to the care teams that provide services within the clinic and also to the residents of the city of Santa Maria via our mobile medical clinics. Thank you for this recognition, and thank you also to the Chamber of Commerce. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Yes, Mr. Cordero?
You know, thank you very much. Well, you know... Oh, I knew of your responsibilities, but I didn't know as much as I know now as to what you provide. And you likely don't know it, but my wife is on the Santa Maria Benita School Board, so she uses your services a lot as well. And what you do for some of the less privileged people in the community is immeasurable. And thank you, thank you, thank you in every single staff member you have. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, our second business recognition this evening is with our longstanding business of the month, and that is JC Trophy, represented today by their owner, DeeDee Maiden, and invited DeeDee to come up as well. Founded in 1973, the business currently has three employees here in Santa Maria. They provide engraving, laser, and full-color sublimation preparation of trophies, badges, plaques, ribbons, and pretty much any other kind of an award or affiliation recognition you want to find. DeeDee purchased the business during the 2008 recession, and not only survived that challenge, but also the recent pandemic, where, as you'll recall, many of our youth sports leagues were shut down for a full year. No games, no trophies, right? So, it was a tough period again for the business. But due to their relationships that she and her team have cultivated in the community, they were able to attract enough orders to keep the business open and are now able to grow again. The business provides donations and discounts to a wide range of local sports teams and leagues, and DeeDee herself volunteers with a number of those programs as well. She encourages everyone to shop local in order to ensure that quality products like those that she sources can continue to be available in our community. We're thrilled tonight to recognize DeeDee and the team at JC Trophy and congratulate them on 50 years of business in Santa Maria. We look forward to the next 50 years. So, ladies and gentlemen, DeeDee with JC Trophies.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much for this recognition. We have had many obstacles with the pandemic and so forth, but without the support of the community, schools, city of Santa Maria, Santa Maria Chamber, many organizations, we are blessed to still be operating. And we actually have three trophy shops, so you can imagine with a year of no sports what that was like. But with the community's support, we've survived, and hopefully we'll continue to do that. And thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you very much. So, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of the Performing Arts and Convention Center feasibility study findings presentation to be made by, is it Samridge Chamber of Commerce? And we have Ms. Sandra Dickerson. Good evening, Ms. Dickerson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you will hear from the public comments, there's a need in our city and North County for greater cultural opportunities. This issue became emphasized for me when I was working with the Santa Maria Philharmonic to try to find a solution to use and store a concert grand piano that had been donated to the Philharmonic. And I learned through that process how limited our concerts here have to be without an appropriate venue for full orchestral events. That initiated the project that we're here tonight to review. The report to be presented to you this evening follows more than two years of work by a group of individuals who came together as a steering committee to evaluate the potential of a performing arts and conference center for our community. Thanks to the city of Santa Maria, we were able to engage a very highly qualified team to conduct the necessary feasibility study. AEA Consulting has more than 30 years of work developing strategic and operational plans and feasibility studies for performing arts centers, conference centers, and multidisciplinary cultural projects. RIOS, RIOS, has transdisciplinary design experience across civic, commercial, cultural, and other markets. Their joint team brought a highly talented group of experts to our study. Daniel Payne with AEA and Christopher Skeens with RIOS will present our study report.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Can you?
Yes, speaking with you.
You're hearing?
Yes.
I can't start my video, so I'm happy to be on video if anybody...
And as we go forward, we'll talk more about the financial implications. It would require some ongoing annual contributed income, but is something that we see in many of these spaces and might be able to be provided either through public subsidy or through private fundraising. And we'll talk more about that. I go to the next slide. The process behind this, I think, is important. This is not just us and RIOS going off into a corner and working up these numbers. It was collaborative and iterative, working with the Chamber of Commerce and working with the steering committee that Sandra spoke about to build out and then refine an initial concept alongside the required programming and physical plans and a financial model for the future Performing Arts and Conference Center. We visited Santa Maria in April. Importantly, we did more than two dozen stakeholder interviews over the course of this work with, I believe, all of the council members who gave important contributions, as well as many members of city staff and other public and cultural representatives. We did demographic and market analysis, benchmarking of other venues around California and around the US, and throughout worked closely with the steering committee to make sure that we were advancing intelligently as we progressed. Go to the next slide, which shows the six main goals that we came back to continuously in the course of this work to make sure that these were centered, both as we analyzed the work as well as developed the final concept, so that the future Performing Arts and Conference Center would be one that can serve a diverse, broad, regional community, a space that could animate spaces consistently in Santa Maria, one that would operate sustainably, one that could be a source for economic development, particularly through downtown revitalization, one that would be flexible and provide incremental paths for implementation, and then lastly, one that was fit for purpose and provide space for some of the core anchor users that we uncovered in the course of our work there, including the Philharmonic, but also future convent users, local community members, tourists who might be visiting Santa Maria. I mentioned the market assessment that we did to underpin some of this work, which I won't dwell on. You all know your city well, of course, but some of the key things that came out of that were that you're a young city, one that's characterized by family-friendly values, and the median age has been 28 or 29 for the last decade or so, and that's comparison to a state average of about 36. It's also a highly Hispanic-Latino market, about 77.5% of the population there identifies as Hispanic or Latino, and 58% speak Spanish at home. And you've got a wide variety of cultural options there now, both cultural options that don't have necessarily the formal space that really lends to their best activation and legitimization of those as places for people to come and gather as a community. You know, there are incredible mariachi concerts that have drawn 2,000 people. Of course, the Philharmonic is a great user, but there are many more types of uses that we identified in the report, ranging from, you know, outdoor events, showcases for youth and teens, graduations, quinceañeras, arts, you know, spaces for arts education programs and so on, that a space like this might be able to provide for. And it's a city that's ultimately well-positioned for future growth and development, and that future growth and development could be supported by a space like the one that we've talked about here. The gaps that we saw that led to some of the inputs for the design of this facility, you know, there were a number of venues that had 300 seats or fewer, although they're sort of spread across the county, but there weren't as many in this middle pocket between 600 to 800 seats that we ultimately, as I mentioned, recommended for the scale of the facility. And also, the need for a larger, flex... And also, the need for a larger, flexible, multi-use space that could be used and deployed in lots of different ways was, was evident from our research. Programmatically, we certainly highlighted the need for more works by and for Latino audiences, the need for opportunities to focus on families and, and children, and show the programming that could be reaching different age groups, both from, you know, childhood on through, I mentioned, teens and, and youth programming earlier. And thinking about how to, to maintain affordability throughout this work is going to be important as the area develops economically. One use that haven't maybe specifically mentioned yet is the conference center market, which we think is going to be important, long-term driver, but something that in the near term needs to be built up and, and developed. There's not a lot of activity at present in and around the city for this, in part because there aren't spaces for this. But it will need to be built up, and so part of the reason that we came to the spaces we came to is to provide an opportunity to, to, to sort of start with the community events and cultural events that are more common right now in the city and in the surrounding area, and then build out as you go and use this as a platform for future support of the, of the growing business market there in the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Chris at RIOS, and he can talk a, a bit about the, the different sites and, and the spaces that we called out in the study.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Skeens with RIOS Architecture in Los Angeles, and I'm really excited to be here presenting this scheme to you tonight. We had so much fun working with the people in Santa Maria and getting to know your wonderful city. And speaking of which, we looked at a number of sites where this performing arts center might be housed. One being the former movie theater down at Site Four. The other, the current DMV site. Another is the current old library. And then there's the Town Center West site, which we think is, is best suited for this project. Our site criteria was sort of site size and location, site visibility, walkability, access to public transportation, and parking, loading access, and then land ownership. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see that the Town Center West really scored highest in all of these criteria, particularly because it's surrounded by local businesses and restaurants, which you can see in blue here, close to existing parking, which is critical, and has really good loading access, which you can see in that blue arrow. And also, it's in the middle of town and has the ability to create a sort of iconic town square and center for Santa Maria that we think is, is really important, especially along that Main Street. Next slide. And so you can see here, parking is a really critical component of serving this facility. And in the 600-seat facility, we see around 630 parking spaces required when the facility is completely full. That's a, that's a maximum and unlikely to occur frequently. So we think around 350 to 400 spaces will be used on an everyday basis. There are currently around 3,200 spaces in the green parking lots that we've highlighted here. So we think that we could accommodate the parking required for the facility with existing facilities, but further studies needed to validate that as we move forward. Next. So next, we look at the program and design of the facility itself, next. And so we started thinking about what needed to be included and the user groups that it was going to serve. And we identified three key user groups, which is seated, ticketed, cultural events, which is symphony concerts, amplified music, theater performances. Second is conference, or commerce events, like conferences, meetings, tourism events, wine festivals. And the third is community events, such as weddings, graduations, town hall meetings, or, you know, faith group meetings. And to serve these communities, we identified three virtues that we felt were critical that the facility possessed. The first of which is flexibility, so it can be used to accommodate the various users. Second is ease of operation, so it can be used by a professional troupe that's coming in with a roadshow, but can also be used by a weekend volunteer who's, who's helping out for their, their kid's performance. And then simultaneity. We felt it was important that the facility be able to serve multiple types and sizes of events at the same time. Next. And so we developed a, a space program. And you, as you can see here, there are, there are two columns of program. One is for the 600-seat venue, which is the recommended venue, and the other is for the 1,000-seat venue, which would be for, you know, a, a larger audience. And we landed in around 32,000 square feet for the smaller venue and 40,000 for the larger venue. And all of these include at least a 500-person seated banquet space that can be used in a flat-four configuration to host larger banquets and events. Next. And so here you can see the various components of that program. In the main, main space, you see a large 600-person seated symphonic orchestra event that's being served by the back-of-house spaces in gray to the north and wrapping around the side. To the south, you see two large conference rooms. And in this case, as they're being used to support some of what's going on for performances in the, in the hall. We see a, a large plaza to the north where you could have outdoor events or pre-function with a blue lobby in the middle. And then what you can see instead of that orange, in, in some of those orange boxes, is that while this performance is going on, the space can also be used and accessed by community, by the community for other events that are happening at the same time as a performance or rehearsal. Next. And so here, a, a main feature of the main space is that those main seating risers can actually roll back and track into the wall. And you can see we can create a flat space in that main space where you can start to have, what's shown here is a lecture, you could have a large banquet. But then another feature of the flexibility is you could add a, a, a demising wall that can be rolled out to divide the space even further. That, this can be true of the conference rooms as well. You can see each of the conference rooms there has an air wall dividing it into a separate space that can accommodate all kinds of different programmatic elements. And then, of course, the flexible plaza out front where you can accommodate food truck events or, or, you know, have a, a moment to view the parade that goes down Broadway. Next. And in terms of costs, at our, you know, our main touch point for looking at this facility was the recently completed Allen Hancock Center. This cost about $48 million at about $550 a square foot. And now our research, looking at both local, California, national, and even international spaces, puts a performing arts facility of this type at around $800 to $1,000 a square foot. Now, we think based on local conditions, it, it could be even lower than that, but we think this is a really safe estimate to use for planning. And if that's the case, then our 600-seat theater would be in the range of $58 to $73 million. And this is inclusive of all soft costs, such as architectural and engineering fees, but does not include exterior areas or land acquisition costs. This is all in $2,023, and should, there should be an expected 5% escalation per year as you project out to do planning for this facility. Next. And so here we have one of the many versions that we worked on as part of this study. You know, this is really a, a starting point for this conversation, and we know that as we collaborate with the city, with the chamber, and the various cultural organizations, things are going to shift and change. But as a start, you can see here we have these sort of generous plazas off of Broadway where people can start to gather and have a community, a community space. You're entering into that blue lobby that wraps around the Performing Arts Center and gives access to the seating area. And that also connects to the two large conference rooms to either side. And so you can see how the, that sort of front zone can act as a, a conference space that, that's completely tied into the performing arts space in the main hall. And then in the back, we have back-of-house spaces, which include dressing rooms, administrative space, a kitchen to serve, to, to cater the events that are going to happen in the place, or just view, function as a place to land for catering, and then a loading dock coming off that internal circulation zone in the, the mall there. Next. And so we, you know, as, as a beginning to the design conversation, did two options. The first of which is this one, which sort of begins to riff off of some of the local Spanish-style architecture that's in the town. You can see the, the generous plazas out front, and we've added this stair coming up to an exterior terrace on the outside that could be an additional gathering space, but also can be rented for private events and different functions. Next. And so we've also come up with another version, which is a little more sleek and, and streamlined, which has a, a more generous kind of open glazed lobby that's very visible from the street and can be a great billboard for events and, and different things that are happening inside of the Performing Arts Center. Next. Yeah, and that's our take on design. It's really been a pleasure to work with everyone, so thank you very much.
And to sort of revert back then to, you know, the, the, Chris talked about the capital cost and, and of course, the design. It's important in our perspective to keep that in close alignment with what the ongoing operation of the facility is going to look like to make sure that you've got something that's sustainable from a long-term basis, because those ongoing running costs of facility over time will eclipse even the, you know, the relatively, what looks like a larger number for that, for that capital cost upfront. So we built a flexible financial model in Excel that we used to test some of the options as these ideas evolved and developed, and can continue to be used and tested as, as further planning continues looking forward. The model is, you know, flexible, as I mentioned, so that it can model both the 600-seat venue as well as the, the 1,000-seat venue in there. We, we use a lot of benchmarks of other facilities, which are listed there, to drive some of the understanding of what likely costs are, and then use the, the market research to project out some of the revenues from, from a usage perspective. In this case, from, from the usage front, a 600-seat venue would be looking at ramping up from about 100 to 150 events per year over the first five years. A little under a third of those are these large conference-style events that use the entirety of that flexible facility that Chris talked about. The remaining events then are split between some larger seated-style events that would use the, in this case, the 600-seat space, and smaller events that would be using either some of the individual conference rooms or might even make use of the, the plazas or spaces like that. And it would see total visitation rising from 58,000 in the opening year in our projections to about 89,000 in year five. If you looked at the 1,000-seat venue, what you would see is a slightly less usage, but higher prices because of the larger capacity in there. So the, the number of events is lower. We, we projected about 76 performances in the opening year, rising up to 136 in, in year five. And, but audience visitation would be higher because it's a bigger venue. So 59,000 people in the opening year to 109,000 people in year five. Go to the next slide. That translates then in each of these cases into an income statement where we projected, you know, revenue line items, the facility rental fees, other facility fees, income from food and beverage that would be provided, some sponsorship income are the main drivers of earned income here. And then looked at expenses. Salaries are usually the largest driver of expense in any facility or cultural operation like this one. Similar here, there are some direct event expenses, even though this is mostly being operated as a rental venue, and most event expenses are, are passed through. There is some support that's, needs to be provided. And then there's overall G and A, a, a little bit of expense in there as well, the other G and A line. That gets us to about $1.4 million of, of expenses in the 600-seat venue and about $1.9 million of expenses in the 1,000-seat venue. And if you net the earned revenue versus those expenses, we're looking at by year five, in a 600-seat venue, a required support of about $230,000, which, if you go to the next slide, could be met in a variety of different ways. Our formatting got a little messed up here in translation here. Apologies for that. And certainly, you know, fundraising in these situations is the art of the possible. And so there's lots of different ways that you can make up that, that pie. Although what we usually see are that individuals are the, the largest source of that funding. That's the, the earned revenue here is the blue slice of the pie, and then individuals are the, the next largest orange slice of the pie. And then you have a, a variety of smaller sources of, of funding that come in philanthropically and, and other support to, to help these facilities operate. Government revenue in California, on average, totals about 10% of, of the overall pie, although there are some cities or counties or other municipal funders who come in and provide more ongoing dedicated support if the project is right and, and appropriate for, for that place. Risk behind all this, just to, you know, worth calling out and keeping in mind as, as we go. Certainly, there's potential for slow demand. We think, we think probably in the early years more than the out years, because the market is still developing. Any complex space like this is going to need to clarify what it is and how it can be used to build some of that demand. That also requires intelligent calendar management and partner management so that people and users can know when they can operate the space and have clarity on when rentals are available and when the scheduling needs to happen over the course of the year. Connecting to tourism and developing an appropriate support infrastructure is important. And then certainly, even though it's a rental venue, you have to put forth some energy to ensure that there's a compelling programming offer there, and that, that helps develop the brand of the overall facility as a place that people want to come and know where it is and, you know, put it on the map, so to speak. Other key risk, fundraising, we of course mentioned. There would likely be some reliance on ongoing contributed income, particularly as, as you get underway. And developing the right governance model that, that can support that is important. And lastly, from an operating perspective, it's a relatively complex project, given all the different uses that could be incorporated in here. And that's not to say there's not other facilities like this. There certainly are that we can point to as case studies. But you need smart operators in there who can help, help operate these in sustainable ways, and also making sure that the HR and staffing model is aligned and that you've got people with the right skills and talents in place. So with that, I think we turn it back over to Glenn or Sandra to talk a little bit about next steps from the, from the local side there. But just to say that, you know, this is another part of the report that we talked about, both from a, from a design perspective and an operational planning perspective, how you, how you push this sort of project forward.
Daniel, Chris, thank you for the work that you and your teams have done to get us to this point. Mayor, members of the council, I want to be clear about where we are tonight and where we're not. We are not here this evening to ask you to build a specific building in a particular configuration on any particular piece of land in the city in your next budget cycle. The questions that we were asked to address through this project were really two in nature. The first was, is the community at a significant size and market development to justify, to support a facility of this type in our community? Those of you that have been with us for a while know that probably 10, 15 years ago, the community did a similar exercise and looked at, at whether the timing was right at that point to build a performing arts convention center in Santa Maria. And at that time, the, the answer to that question was really no, that it was something for the future. And so that was the first question we were asked to answer. And the second was, if that was something that would make sense, is there a path that would get us to success? Is there a, could it be, you know, built in the community? And what would the, what would that take in terms of, of, of resources, planning, and those kinds of things? Tonight, I think what we're, what we're here to share is that we do believe that there is adequate market demand. We believe that the arts community is growing in... We believe that the arts community is growing in our, in this valley and that uh they would benefit from a permanent home, if you will, a place where the arts could be showcased, um, elevated within our, the fabric of our community and a home where, where we could invite others into our community, whether that's for professional meetings or cultural activities. So, yes, we believe that it's time for the community to begin the process of seriously planning for a performing arts and convention center. The second question was, could it be done and what would it take? And I think that's what we've shared with you this evening is one scenario. Uh, the more detailed report that, that was provided to the council um lays out a couple of others, including some of the um strengths or weaknesses of other sites in the community that might be, you know, considered as well. But we wanted to show, to highlight a path, a potential path that could be followed um as we move forward. We really believe, Mayor, that the, the next step in this process uh would be to, to work with, with the, the city uh and the private sector to stand up an organization, um, call it the Friends of the Santa Maria Valley Performing Arts Center, if you will, that could take ownership of this conversation and begin to flesh out the details, to identify um, you know, the, the more particular uh needs of the arts community that exists here today, to really start to look at uh all of the use cases and how that building should come together and in what shape it ought to be um put together. And then ultimately to try to identify where the funding comes from. Are there grants out there that we could pursue? Uh, is there a philanthropic opportunity to raise funds within the community? Are there organizations that through rent or use fees would contribute to that? And so as you can see, we're, we really think this is the beginning of a much deeper and much more detailed conversation um that needs a team of people within our community who are, who are tasked and who are, who are passionate about um, you know, seeing something like this come to fruition um and that will shepherd that forward and continue to do uh the homework and put all of those pieces together um with an eye toward eventually um, you know, breaking ground and cutting a ribbon on, on a facility somewhere in the community that would serve those needs. Um, so with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions from you or members of the council. Um, and thank you for the opportunity uh to work with your staff and um members of our local arts community on this project today.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Cordero.
This really impresses me. Um, I'm, I would be very much in favor of seeing something like this come to fruition. Uh, but all the questions that you mentioned are, are certainly uh unanswered. Uh, I was a little bit frightened by the, by the location that we talked about over here um from a parking standpoint, but I, I don't, I can't imagine this, a facility of this size going anywhere in the current boundaries of City of Santa Maria that is not going to experience a parking issue. So, uh, it's something that I guess we, we'll have to deal with. And we are going to end up going here. Uh, I, I don't know when, I don't know who's going to spearhead it, but we really need to do this to compete with the, our neighboring communities and give ourselves um a standing in that, in that market, in that venue. So I really look forward to seeing some of the unanswered questions come, come, come with some answers. Financing, location, um, and, and you know that we're looking at the possibility of uh annexation and that's a whole nether thing that this is premature to talk about, but, but uh I would really, I, I, I got things in my mind that are just going around and around thinking, we could do this here and we could do that there. Uh, we had a rather expanded council meeting about ten years ago and had to have it over at the fairgrounds. You remember that, Madam Mayor? And uh, so, um, I, I'm, I'm excited about it and uh trying to figure out how to do it and, and to learn more about the, about the financing. So, I, I think that's a lot of work and the RIO's uh organization uh sounds like they're very well-informed and experienced at getting these things through. So, maybe we need to get Greg Hart back down here. He just floated a million dollars to us. Uh, maybe we need to step up our, our needs here a little bit.
We should invite him down every week.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, it's, I, it's not really a question, it was just those comments that I would certainly like to see this uh develop uh o- over the, over the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions there? Okay, um, thank you for the presentation. It was great. I can remember, what was it, ten, twelve years ago when um this was brought to the city about doing something like this and they, they, they came up with, not at this time, maybe down the road. You know, I, I think, I, I know we have a lot of arts people in our community and they're going elsewhere to show their art. And here we are, right on the central coast. But you know where I think we're missing a lot are conventions. I can remember years and years ago, when the city was much smaller and California was smaller, they were having conventions here, but they were doing it at the Santa Maria Inn. That was the only venue. Then they built the convention center, so we have two boxy buildings over there. Um, but to have a real convention center, I think we're really missing the boat. Everybody wants to come to the coast to do something, whatever it is. And so I think we're missing that, uh, and the Clark Center doesn't have the, the capacity for the symphony, as we well know. So I think it's really sort of exciting to look at, to see what we're going to do. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Dickerson. Thank you, Mr. Morris. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent.
Sorry to interrupt, but we have two public comments on the.
Oh, on this item? I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, Vicky Connor and Lynn Garrett. So, Ms. Connor.
Good evening, I'm Vicky Connor. I'm a Santa Maria resident and I'm also initiatives director for Econ Alliance and I've been serving on the committee that is uh working on this project. And I'm speaking tonight uh on behalf of Econ Alliance, uh, which some of you know has a mission to uh build awareness, advocacy, support and appreciation for North County industries and communities. And so a project like this is very interesting, I think, for our mission as well as for the city's uh interests, because the, um, while tonight, tonight's recommendation is not for a specific configuration or a specific design or a specific location, I think the important thing is to understand the need and respect the fact that there's, uh, that need is growing. And as uh Mayor Patino mentioned, there's a, a great need for uh some of the cultural activities. Uh, Econ Alliance does a lot of surveys and a lot of convenings and we constantly hear from people, as does, I'm sure Suzanne, in her conversations uh with economic development partners, the fact that uh a lot of the retention and attraction of employees depends on the experiences that people can have in an area. And it's one of the, uh, one of the elements that seems to be missing in the um perspective of visitors considering employment here. And so I think the addition of a facility like this that could sort of showcase the cultural aspects of the community, but also offer the opportunities for convenings of a larger nature than we're currently able to do with the, the hotel venues, uh, as the mayor said, for conferences and, and exhibits and smaller trade shows and those kinds of things. Uh, it could serve the industry interests as well as the public sector um and the arts community interests. So it's a very uh interesting project and I would just encourage you all to stay open-minded about the um possibilities of this kind of a joint uh use facility that would uh serve multi-purpose uh applications in the community and save money for each of those applications, even though the price seems uh a little stunning when you first see it. I think all large visionary projects are like that when they're first considered. So, we appreciate you watching this um presentation and I encourage you to stay open-minded about the project and continue your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Lynn Garrett.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity to speak for a moment. I am a musician. I'm in the Santa Maria Philharmonic. I have served for many years on the board and in various capacities and I've seen um our predicament, which has always been that we had nowhere really to perform. So we are currently performing at the Grace Baptist Church on McCoy and College and it's a lovely facility and we're very grateful to have that space. However, it has a major drawback and that is, it's a very small stage. Uh, it, it's essentially, we can fit about um forty-five to fifty people on that stage and that's about the size of an eighteenth-century symphony. And um, you know, we've come a couple hundred years since then, so this limits our ability to program works that have uh, have space for many, many musicians. If you look at the hundreds years that followed um the times of Haydn and Mozart, the orchestras uh developed uh very quickly into uh orchestras that um required up to ninety players. And these are some of the fabulous works by Tchaikovsky, Mahler, Wagner, and we can't program any of those works because we don't have the space for the musicians. So I think it's, it's really been um short, uh, shorting the um, uh, the, the audience in Santa Maria that they can't enjoy these fabulous concerts of massive orchestra sounds with eight horns and five trumpets and huge string ensemble because there is nowhere where that space i- is provided. So I think it's, it's a shame that the um, uh, community has had not the, had the opportunity to hear these works. And also I think it, it limits the growth of the Santa Maria Philharmonic. Um, we, we can't offer those spectacular performances of Beethoven's Ninth Symphony because there's nowhere for a choir. We can't do Handle Messiah because there's nowhere for a choir. So I think it would really open up uh this orchestra to become a prominent feature in the Santa Maria arts world. And I think that would be an asset for um the community and it would be a way to really open up the development and growth of the Santa Maria Philharmonic. So thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items or matters not on the printed agenda. This evening, unless otherwise directed, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Gary Hall, followed by Laurie Temura.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Hall.
Council members, staff and City of Santa Maria citizens. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at twenty-one thirty-five North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or N S B I T. Our goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowners' equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. I am speaking tonight to once again ask the City of Santa Maria to join over one hundred other California jurisdictions. Citizens. I just wonder if the mobile home residents of those other one hundred-plus jurisdictions had to spend this much time convincing their elected officials of the need. As a reminder, the Santa Maria struggle for rent stabilization began in nineteen ninety-nine when the original unenforceable model lease was developed. As I've done previously, I will continue to thank Councilmember Soto, Escobedo and Cordero for passing the June sixth, twenty twenty-two motion, which reads, "To examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives." On November fourteenth, the most recent stakeholder meeting was conducted under the leadership of interim Assistant City Manager Wu. On December thirteenth, the city councilman's staff received our latest status report and proposal moving forward document from our attorney, Bruce Stanton. It acknowledges some positive results, but also identifies issues still needing resolution. The document closes with the following message. "We, the mobile home residents, are committed to continue good-faith discussions and efforts to achieve the overarching goals stated above, and we are ready and willing to work with the city to achieve that goal with or without the participation of the park owners. Happy holidays."
Thank you, Mr. Hall. The next item is the consent calendar. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for this? Oh, I'm sorry. I had your name right here, Laurie Temura. I'm sorry. I must be trying to get through this meeting really, really quick.
Yeah, and I, I apologize for even speaking on this item. Uh, I'm, um, speaking in regards to the Growth Mitigation Annual Compliance Report and I wanted to make a couple of points. First of all, this um AB sixteen-hundred-feet program has been very successful for the City of Santa Maria. Uh, and substantial amount of money has been collected over the years and go on directly to capital projects, including things like the library, the police department, fire stations. Uh, we're also seeing a number of road improvements um that have been done over the last thirty years since the last general plan was updated. Uh, I also provided um a slip for each one of you to look at a table. There's other fees that are experienced by developers that are not part of this annual report. In total, um, every single, single-family home and or apartment pays between forty and sixty thousand dollars per unit for developer fees. This includes almost fifteen thousand to the school district, there's twelve thousand to the state water project, there is on the Quimby fees, which are not reported in this report. So, um, please keep this in mind that when projects come forward, the end result is someone either buying the unit or renting the unit and those transactions include the AB sixteen-hundred fees. It's the end user that pays those fees, not the developers in, in the end. So if there's opportunities as we go through the new update to the AB sixteen-hundred fees that Public Works is now initiating, one of the considerations is, is there any way for affordable units or small units to be considered in a different category? Um, the last thing is, in your report, um, currently, there's over thirty-three million dollars or thirty-four million dollars in the traffic section. And uh, I believe by state law, after a period of time, something has to be done with that money, one way or the other. And uh, I have not heard of any new capital projects coming forward under the roads division and I'd like to see maybe on a separate agenda report on what's the, the agendas or what's the um schedule for some of these road improvements. schedule for some of these road improvements, particularly Broadway and 101 interchange, that is a Measure A-funded project, and other grants and funding sources that the city's pursuing to keep up with the road improvements that we need as development moves forward. I was hoping we'd have more discussion tonight. I didn't realize it was a consent item, but I will continue to be here to work with the city on the fees, fee program, and implement them through the different projects that we're working on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Temura. Okay, well, let's go on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. So next, we have a regular business item, 13A, and the annual appointment of Mayor So do we have any, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
There are none.
There are none. So I'll bring this item back to the council, and I would like to nominate Councilmember Soto as Mayor Protem for the 2024 calendar year. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's no discussion, I guess, and Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and thank you for willing to serve. The next item will be a report by Entram City Manager, Mr. Posada.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Just recapping a few things, I did want to comment, if I could, on Ms. Temura's comments. So Public Works Director Folgoni and I spoke a little bit earlier, and Public Works does plan to bring in a new study to figure out where those road dollars should be spent. It's something that's been kind of ongoing. There was a time when there were projects moving forward, and Director Folgoni is committed to moving some projects forward. So we'll be hearing, you'll be hearing something more, and we can certainly get with Ms. Temura and get her input, as well as any of the other developers that are interested. For your next council meeting, January 2, there is no meeting. The meeting has been canceled. So we'll go to the January 16 meeting. You'll have a closed session on labor and property negotiations. You have a presentation from Marion Trauma Program and the Trauma Center update from Marion Hospital. You'll have appointments to boards and commissions. So if any of you have vacancies on any of your boards or commissions and you'd like to talk to your appointees, that would be great. The city clerk's office will be handling the application process, so you can get ahold of the clerk's office if you have anybody interested in a position. You'll be reviewing an Office of Traffic Safety grant from the police department. You'll be looking at a contract to award citywide pedestrian safety projects. And to Mr. Hall's comments, Mr. Wu hopes to present some information on mobile home discussion that, the progress that they made, or presentation on that. That'll all be at your 16th meeting. It'll be a very busy meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. Okay, let's go to oral reports of council members, and who wants to start?
Oh.
Okay, okay, Mr. Cordero, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 12/7, I attended the Public Works Appreciation BBQ out at Piner Park. On the 13th, I was at the check presentation for Assemblyman Greg Hart, where he and Lena, her name?
Limon.
Limon?
Limon.
She, they presented us with a million-dollar check to go toward the sports center, the soccer fields down adjacent to Menami Center. On 12/13, I also attended a 3CE board meeting that I really can't report out too much on. It was a closed session item. On the 19th, which was today, I'm happy to say that I had the opportunity to work with over at the Elks, and we packed food boxes for needy families, and it was refreshing to, at the very least, to see some of these people show up and take these big boxes and bags of food and vegetables, and it was really kind of heartwarming. And then I want to report on a meeting that I attended at the Elks. Because of the secrecy of the Elks, I can't tell you too much about it, but this particular item took place before the meeting, and we had, I had an opportunity, we all had an opportunity to hear Mayor Patino speak there in appreciation for the, for the business relationship that the Elks has with the city. And I have to say, Mayor, that I know you do a great job at that and those things, but after you left, there was a lot of comments made that were very, very complimentary to the city, to you, to all of us up on the dais, and I think you did an outstanding job of showing the appreciation of the city and the cooperation that we get in dealing with the Elks. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Ms. Soto?
I'm here for a line.
Okay. On December 5, I did the Ben Hayes Show, and on the 6th, I did a teacher tour appreciation event. On the 8th of December, I had a Fighting Back Santa Maria Board Meeting. On December 13, I did the Policy Board Meeting for 3CE and went out to, and Mr. Cordero, you were there, Menami Center, where Assemblyman Hart, Greg Hart, and Senator Limon were there to present the million-dollar check for the soccer complex. And I did remind him that the county had given us 1.5 million, and if he wanted to increase that check, he was, you know, he'd be more than welcome, and any of the money's coming down. However, we know what the California budget is like, so there may not be any of those monies coming forward. On the 14th, I attended SB CAG meeting in the morning and a LAFCO meeting in the afternoon, and I attended the Elks Club. I wanted to thank the Elks Club. They loaned us the carriage that we rode down for the Christmas parade. We have had many rides down that street for a Christmas parade, and this, you missed the best one, Ms. Soto. It was, well, it wasn't cold that evening. The seats were comfortable. There was a blanket in there, and everything ran perfect. Nothing broke down. So it was just all of those things put together. But I wanted to thank them for what an integral part they are to the City of Santa Maria, and they do so much for the youth in Santa Maria, and probably don't get enough applause for that. December 15, I did a leadership of Santa Barbara, and that's where all the mayors and the city managers meet quarterly. And let's see, the 17th, which was Sunday, 150 years of life and ministry at the First Methodist Church across the street. And that was very nice. It's hard to believe. This was their third location, and they decided back in 1993, they were going to put the money into that location and stay there, and that's a beautiful building. And I think that was very, that's, you know, we know when we have to make the decisions when it comes to money, but to put money, more money into an old building, but they wanted to keep that building, which is a beautiful building. I never want to see it go down in the City of Santa Maria. Today, on the 19th, we went to a badge pinning at the police department, and we have, what is it, Chief Snyder, two new officers? Okay, and that brings us up to where?
120.
120? Okay. I keep thinking we're going to reach that 124. So 124 new officers. And I would like to wish everyone in the City of Santa Maria a Merry Christmas. Enjoy your families and enjoy the holiday. This meeting is concluded.